Sorry about the ear cleansing. We'll call the meeting of the town council to order and start with the opening prayer and we'll call, pledge allegiance. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who place their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. The Lord bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Tammy.
Mayor Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Duff?
Here.
Councilman Babylon?
Here.
Councilman Renahan?
Here.
Councilman Cavey?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Minute approvals?
Please approve the minutes from the August 12th meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm.
Alright Tammy, your inaugural staff report, please.
Alright, we'll start with the downtown revitalization project. Carroll County, the town of Hampstead and JMT met on August 20th to discuss the possibility of rolling the sewer replacement project from the county and the water replacement project into one, thereby hiring one contractor to complete both projects. And I'm going to be meeting with State Highway, the State Highway Project Manager on September 11th to discuss the street scape portion of the project. We hope to have a resolution from them on the BG&E, Verizon and Comcast concerns that were raised at the July 15th meeting. We also hope to discuss the timeline and if any changes are being made due to some of these outstanding concerns.
So who are you meeting with from SHA?
The project manager Sean Johnson. The breakout project, State Highway and CG Miller completed the project. However, the sidewalk was completed before BG&E could reconnect the gas line and ship lease. So BG&E hopes that they can just go through the street, but they may have to cut the sidewalk. With the Fuchs project, they submitted final site plans for review at the August 27th Planning and Zoning Meeting. Signs have been posted on the property for the public hearing that will be held during the September 24th Planning and Zoning Meeting. Autozone, there's some issues with the language in their PWA, so Michelle's working on that. And in the meantime, they're proceeding with the permitting process with the county. Chosne Bank, with the assistance of Public Works, the water main is now connected to our system. They have finished their interior plumbing and are using approximately 10,000 gallons of water a day. They issued a one-year maintenance bond and the town released the original severity bond. The FEMA grant for generators, Public Works has met with JMT to discuss design and size of generators. Once this is completed, we'll be purchasing two mobile generators to add to our existing fleet, piggybacking on the state of Maryland contract. And we have three years to complete this grant. The North Carroll Farms Five Development, Michelle, the town attorney, attorney is working on the PWA and we are working with MRA on a design related to the interior of the pump house. And I'm coordinating a meeting with everyone involved with the development to work out the final details. The Verizon lease on the North Tower, we have a mutually agreed upon lease. We are waiting on their attorney to draft the revised lease agreement for signatures. And Verizon's working with our inspector on final construction drawings for approval. And Verizon's planning on construction in the month of December. The AT&T lease for Panther, for the Panther Tower, their current lease expires in September of 2015. We'll be asking for a new rental rate that is comparable to what Verizon will be paying. Currently, the lease is under negotiation. With the stormwater management project, WRCC, the WRCC committee has completed a draft MOU regarding the working arrangement between the county and municipalities for the new stormwater management system. The towns and county met on August 27th and today to discuss the MOU. Carroll County hopes to have the agreement ready for signature during the Carroll County Commissioners Meeting on October 23rd.
So when are they going to have it to us? So they got to have it to us by the next council meeting?
Yeah, they should have, the comments were ready today, so they should be able to put together with our comments and ask to come back to us and our lawyers and... The Salt Storage Building, the bid packages were released on August 8th and three bids were returned. The bids were open on September 8th and the award will be announced later in this council meeting. With the solar project, as everybody knows, SolarCity presented the last council meeting. I met with BG&E to discuss the town's electricity use and kind of see what they had to say about solar power options. And a meeting with SolarCity to discuss their proposal on September 23rd. And then Earth and Air Technologies is presenting at tonight's council meeting. The Barry Barnes property, Mr. Barnes was sentenced to five years in prison with four years suspended. Mr. Barnes will serve one year and have three years supervised probation for illegally dumping construction waste at 1933 Hennepin Pike. Carroll County is sending an invitation for bids for cleanup of the property. Eliana's Plaza Two, they are in the final stages of construction and we have released some of his letter of credit.
Questions for Tammy? Alright, Marlene, you ready with oversight?
Sure. Hampstead Farmer's Market report. Market attendance is 83% higher than last year at this time. And we're averaging 963 customers a Saturday, so we're really pleased with that. Our last event of the season was, well, the last event that we had was on August the 30th. It was our Farm to Fork Day, it was a huge success. And, excuse me, we had the highest attendance this year, over 1,200 customers. Mary Jo Cooked, she did a great job. We had a representative from Snap Fitness. The dietitian from Carroll Hospital Center was thrilled with the response that she had. She had information on portion control and little food displays that looked real and they weren't real, but it was really cool. CBS Radio was there, the Community Media Center taped it for a future episode of Serving Carroll. And I haven't gotten the details on that yet, when it'll be available. There's a lot of editing apparently to do. And just a major thank you to Toby David of Public Works. He, we couldn't have done it without him because he helped us get the tables there and the planks for Mary Jo to stand on. So he was a big help. What I learned, which I didn't know, and it's really interesting to see the collaboration of local businesses. I had bought a loaf of bread at Snickerdoodles and I had told Rob Gonzalez, I said, "Boy, that was really good." He goes, "Well, you thank Luke Rupp of Old Valley Farm because we're selling his bread now." So I think on weekends, Snickerdoodles is now selling the bread, the artisan bread that one of our vendors makes. So I just thought that was so cool. It's a nice collaboration. They're both taking advantage of the opportunity for the exposure for his product, which is really very good. Our next event will be on September the 20th. It's the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, and this has been spearheaded by Senator Joe Getty. He gave us a call. He was challenged by his daughter to participate in this and he wanted a venue to be able to do it. So he has invited representatives from the Ravens Brigance Brigade to be there. They will be there from 9:00 to 12:00. He was hoping that OJ Brigance himself would be there depending on his health, he's not sure. He's invited electeds to participate and that will take place midfield at 11 o'clock that morning. The Lazarus String Band from Lazarus Church in Lionborough will be performing that morning. Our closing day is September the 27th, however, only two people have expressed interest in participating in a chili cook-off, so don't count on that happening. Our Christmas Farmer's Market will again coincide with the...
Which two?
Actually, two, one former vendor and one current vendor. And you know what? Wayne Jr. did this wonderful flyer for us and we had all these little tear-offs on the bottom with my phone number. And wherever I go, where I put those flyers, all the tear-offs are gone, but I have not had one phone call. So I don't know what the heck happened with that.
The number...
Unless some kids are just pulling these little things with my phone number off and it's plastered somewhere, I don't know.
Waiting till the last one.
But I haven't been getting any phone calls.
What times of chili, you just, you don't have to make it there or anything, you're just going to warm it up and hand it out?
Well, we were hoping, we were hoping that people would make it there. But if, last year, I mean, when we did it for the Fall Fest, people actually made it right there on the premises, so... But I'm not going to worry about it now because we're not having this, so...
So now it's officially off?
Sykesville has 17 people, so I guess you have to really be established with that kind of thing, I don't know.
I think the beer had something to do with it.
The beer and the, yeah, the beer and the Chili Fest, yeah, that had, I think that was a big draw. Our Christmas Farmer's Market is going to coincide with the tree lighting night again. Will be again hosted by the Hampstead Train Station. The hours will be Friday, November 21st from 4:00 to 8:00. Saturday, November 22nd from 10:00 to 5:00. And Sunday, November 23rd from 12:00 to 5:00. We have 16 vendors who are interested in participating. So we're going to stretch it out over the weekend, see what happens. And if it's good, that's great. If it's not, well then we'll know to cut it back to just Friday next year. And the last thing I have is I attended the monthly board meeting of the Human Services Program of Carroll County on August the 21st. And that's it.
Just want to compliment you when I was there this week. It was hot, humid.
It was hot.
It was summertime in Hampstead for what we're having at any rate. And you basically were a one-man show running and organizing the Farmer's Market and I just wanted to...
We had an injury, yeah.
Acknowledge that effort and thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the time and effort you're putting into it.
Thank you.
Marlene?
Okay, the Hampstead Train Station Committee, we had to cancel our flea market in August because of the bad weather. Our next flea market's going to be on September 27th. I think we've already got six or seven vendors signed up for it, so I think it's going to be exciting. Unfortunately, it's the last day of the Farmer's Market as well, that day, so it's going to be kind of split between the two sites. The, as Marlene has already said, we're sponsoring the Christmas Farmer's Market again this year. Already signed the contract with the, with Gail and John, so we're set and ready to go. And we've already got the spaces rented, so now it's just a matter of decorating. And I had a gentleman approach me about putting up a semi-permanent train layout. He wants to put it up over the month of October in the train station and have it on display for November, December and early January.
Great.
So it's something that we're looking into, we need to get people to support being open three, he wants us to be open three days, so Friday night, Saturday and Sundays, so everybody have a chance to come see it. So we're working on staffing and if we get that accomplished, then we're going to go forward with it. There was no meeting of the Hampstead Business Association this month. Assume they're going to have one October, first Wednesday in October. That's all I have.
Alright, Jason?
Planning and zoning met on August 27th. We had a Main Street revitalization update, which Tammy touched on most of the highlights. Introduction of the final site plan for Fuchs North America. They had presented a different, a little bit different layout of the property based on potential future additions. And the original building stayed the same as far as footprint. And actually, they had a rendition of the front facade and it looks very, very nice. So I think everyone's excited about that. Public hearing will be held at September Planning and Zoning and the final vote on the site plan will be held in October at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. There was proposed changes to Jiffy Mart, 1155 South Main Street. Basically, it's a facade change, they're going to add some nice brick layout to the bottom, stucco to the top, take the green banner all the way across and add, I used this very sparingly, tower, it's just maybe four foot above the door. And the triangle above the corner is, will be gone, so that was approved and I think that's going to be a nice change to downtown. County update by Bobby Moser, she updated us on the 2015-2016 Consolidated Transportation Plan. The standout for us is number four in that plan, which is the Main Street Streetscape. And it identifies that we were fully funded for design and planning. The 2015 Carroll County Master Plan Review and Public Hearing is underway. That document is currently out for public review and comments. And I believe that there is a scheduled citizen outreach meeting, I think it is tomorrow here, no, tomorrow 7:00 to 9:00 at the Senior Center at the north end of town. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be September 24th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall.
I called Jack Teddison, thanked him for that revised plan of that Jiffy Mart, so big improvement over what we've got.
It looks very nice.
Tim?
Alright, it's for parks, Public Works completed spraying for weeds at all the parks in town. They also did a visual inspection of all the equipment and found it to be working adequately. Still waiting to hear back on the grant that we've discussed the last couple of meetings, to hear an update on that for the exercise equipment at the municipal park. And that's pretty much it. Winter's right around the corner, so enjoy the parks while you can.
Alright, Joe, last but not least.
Okay, August average water usage was 430,000 gallons per day. September 2014, the average water usage so far is 460,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for August was 2.93 inches. And the rainfall total so far for September was .27. That's all I have.
Alright, sitting in for the chief, Sergeant Gagler.
Oh, let me start. First of all, you know that our new professor graduated from the academy and is now out on field training. He graduated last Thursday. And he's been out one week now with clinic officer form, and that's what we do his primary field training with. He's had a great week. I think he'll be a great addition to our staff. The officers issued 158 citations and warnings in the month of August. We had thirteen crashes, seven of them were at the 35 gas at 482. That's going to be a traffic issue for us. Seven of them were throughout the town. The other six were throughout the town. The biggest serious crime we had was the Verizon up north was burglarized. We don't have any suspects in that yet, we're still investigating that one. We also had two other facts. Last month, at the Hampstead Advisor Council Meeting, they had the big speakers from North Carroll, Carroll County Health Department and then the drone administration and I can't think of the gentleman's name, but that's the reason the rehab facility. But that was a big success and that showed a lot of results of recovering addicts and what they went through and what the families went through. They said the speakers and the children were fabulous about dealing with the parents and what it was.
Before you move on, I was there and it was a full house. It was not anything like I expected. It was a very fast two hours. Lots of heartfelt stories about abuse and how it's impacted families in Carroll County. If we had this issue with drive-by shootings, we'd certainly have a lot more outcry. But it is an issue and we've got to deal with it. My compliments to Chief for organizing the event. And Joe Getty was here and basically, I think it was a front page article in the Northern News and it was, I thought, well-written, well-done. It was just sort of summarizing the meeting, summarized it very well, but it was an excellent meeting.
Yeah, I've listened to him speak before, but unfortunately I had to be in four places at once last month, so I wasn't here. The captain and I handled everything for the carnival and the parade. Everything went off without a hitch. It was a good year. We had a few problems, but none of them were on the fun of the ground. So officers made 130 control checks of the school businesses and government facilities. PFC, Orum, Aimstorm, we're both on bike patrol throughout Carnival Week. I attended an HOA meeting for the fields. And that's about it. The next Hampstead Police Advisor Council Meeting is Wednesday, November 19th at 11 o'clock.
Questions for Stacy?
Yeah, Stacy, the one thing about the bypass, it kind of jumped out at me, seven accidents in the same place?
And you can thank SHA for that.
What, what happened?
They determined how to put a bypass circle in and people don't have a driver.
Okay, was it, was it varying times or was it, you know, what?
That I can't, I just know that there were seven crashes there.
Usually, the issue is the far lane. So you're in the bypass and there's two lanes there and the person on the outside doesn't see you. At least, the only thing about the accidents are, there's nothing head-on at 45 miles an hour, it's 25 mile an hour fender benders, so that's part of it.
Yeah, most of them, we consider code 89, which they're both drivable from the scene, no apparent injuries, minor damage to vehicles. The also, the other thing is, when they're coming down the bypass, either north or south, and they're trying to get one to 482, if you're in the outside lane, it actually, when you come around the circle to get on 42, it brings you, it brings you around to the right lane. If you're on the outside, it tells you to go from the inside lane to the outside lane to get on 42. People don't follow those dotted lines.
Yeah.
So, and you know, they say that you're supposed to merge going into a circle that it's not a stop sign. Well, guess what, when traffic's coming, it's supposed to be stopped.
I don't, I don't see this as a hard thing. The only, the only problem I see with the circle is that, you know, from going back and forth, I guess it's east to west, is that these people think that they don't have to yield, they don't have to stop. They immediately can just go right in that circle, no matter who's in there. You know, whether it's in the inner lane, whether it's on the outer lane, they just have a right of way.
And we had...
I've watched this happen before.
Right after the circle came out, we had lots of complaints. We got brochures from SHA on how to drive in a circle and they were available to everybody.
Yeah.
Maybe...
Traffic circles are not the norm and we won't...
Yeah, maybe we put something actually in the roadway that's like yield to traffic.
Simple game.
Suggestion. Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else for Stacy?
Couple other things, my compliments to the fire department as well. They had a great week. I think they only lost one day because of weather. Yeah, when we had our council meeting. The fire, the parade went off without a hitch and was well-attended as usual. As usual, I got a swarm, throwing candy, so good times had by all. What?
It was a small parade.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a lot shorter than what it was.
Alright. Let's see, what else? I already talked about the police advisory meeting. Westminster had their 250th anniversary kickoff yesterday where they reopened their Old Town Hall or City Hall. I attended that. In the next couple of weeks, we get busy again with MML. I'll be at the fall conference for the next two and a half days with the legislative initiative. And then in September 18th, I think you've all seen the invite to be in New Windsor for the chapter meeting, which I'm sure we'll go over a lot of the review and summary of what happened at the fall MML meeting. So that's it for me. Unfinished business?
Two issues. The Hilllock issue?
Yeah.
When last we heard about that, I think it was going off to the attorneys and I haven't heard anything back yet. Is anything getting done?
There are two ships passing in the night, the two attorneys. They're communicating, so we're waiting to hear.
Okay. And the other thing was the ethic ordinance. We kind of slipped it to the back burner. We were waiting to see what happened with the state at the last legislative session and nothing happened.
Guess what's an initiative this year? It's actually made the agenda for MML. So that's, that's where we are with that one.
Okay, so we're not going to bother to get compliant with the Maryland State Ethics Code right now and wait and see what they do in January?
Or don't do, January, February, March, April. It's Mount Arius, Westminster and Gaithersburg. So, and they, we, the general consensus is they want to do something about the financial disclosures. And it's, the legislative committee made it a priority this year. So we'll see. If it, if it doesn't move, we're done.
Okay. That's all I have on whole business.
Alright, new business is the approval of the Salt Storage Facility Construction. We got three bids in. You'll notice that Mesa Moore Contractors was the low bidder. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, I met with Public Works and that's who we recommend.
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid from Mesa Moore Contractors Incorporated, $139,150.
Second? Thank you, babe. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? I was here yesterday. It's interesting that one of the guys walked in at 3:02, walked over to the site and walked back here and submitted his package at 3:28. He didn't, obviously was not successful. Alright, Earth and Air Technologies, solar power presentation. Ken, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, council members for the invitation. Tammy, for last minute, I, you know, I called her, I think the very next day after she was onboard and kind of said, "What's going on?" I would like to talk a little bit about the solar project that the town is looking to do. And of course, I can graduate later first, that's where I kind of hit her with that. But just to give a little bit of the background, my name's Ken Donovan with Earth and Air Technologies. And we actually brought this to Ken Decker's attention, I would say back in 2010. We were looking to possibly do some solar back then. And that's when I said, "Tammy, did he use the file? Did he take it with him?" when he left. So I kind of, kind of waving my hands up and saying, "Hey, we're out here too and we're local." And that isn't the reason that we're here, to say we're local and work with someone locally because their installations and reputation stand well in there. I do want to step up on the soapbox a little bit, just to kind of give you a highlight of what we were here and what we did.
Alright.
This would better work, it's plugged in, doesn't it?
Yes, it would.
Am I even unscrewed?
I apologize, I thought it was plugged in.
I'm an engineer, I can handle it.
Good, thank you.
How's your charger?
Love you. Check out our sound system afterwards.
I'm on an A B E, sorry.
Maybe we'll turn the thing a little one up. It's a test.
If I can't operate the projector as far as doing a solar installation, just let me walk out the door, right?
It was a test.
It's getting there. You're alright.
You alright?
No, we can, you can see it with the lights on when it's warmed up.
Again, thanks for the invitation. Earth and Air Technologies, we were founded in, actually 2000. And was established in 2009. We're, my wife and I are local residents. We moved up here in 1998 in Hampstead. And actually, that's how I got into this business because we were in our house the very first night and the wind was just blowing uncontrollably. I thought, I thought our house was going to... And I said, "We got to get a wind turbine up here." And that's how Earth and Air Technologies started. We installed a wind turbine at a residence and from there, we got into the solar industry. I'm a Navy veteran. The company is a small business, veteran-owned, again, local Westminster. We do wind, solar mainly 90%, 95%. Wind is a tough sell here in Carroll County, although you may think you have a lot to win. Really, it's not the winds you need to sustain the energy. Solar is where the bang for the buck is. One of the big things about doing a renewable energy project, specifically solar, is whoever is doing the installation, you want to make sure that they have an ABSEP certification, which is North American Board for Certified Energy Practice. And that's kind of like, you don't want somebody coming in your house that doesn't have an MHIC license to work in your house. So this is kind of like that certification where minimally, you want to have somebody that's coming in, doing an installation, knows what they're doing and is certified. That's kind of what a lot of the state jurisdictions are requiring. And mainly the state of Maryland, just this past July, June actually, required that any company that are doing solar installations, in order to get grants and incentives, have to be an ABSEP certified. And we are certified. Like I said, I want to step up on the soapbox a little bit. We have been a pioneer, not just in the county, but in the state. We were one of the first, we installed the largest commercial farm, a working farm in Carroll County, actually, because of Westminster. And this was Sunnyside Farms, great old... It's not the largest today. It was when we installed it in 2010. The largest one is actually one we installed last year. So we had the first two largest, a lot of our businesses are part of it.
How big were they compared to what it is we're looking at?
Comparable. And one of the things that we'd like to offer the mayor, town council, is if you want to go on a tour at one of the sites, we'd be more happy to show you around, you see the footprint. Get an idea physically what type of size you're looking at for this type of system. And I kind of just got some information this past week. It was kind of last minutes. I apologize for not knowing all the specifics exactly where you're going to look into put the system. But my understanding is that Farms Lane or Farm-
Farmwood Lane.
Farmwood Lane. The pumping station. We were also the first install, the largest dual-access solar tracker. And that's the system that actually tracks with the sun. And the benefits of those is if you have a real small footprint and you want to install a system that you want to maximize the energy and you can only put it in a small space. This maximizes about forty to fifty percent more energy than just your standard ground mounted system. And this actually is off of Shop Road. This is one of the farms up there. We have three of the dual-access trackers. You may have seen some of our systems as you travel around the county. We do like to, however, pick spots where they are not as visible, if at all practical. Of course, the main, the main goal is to absorb as much energy from the sun as possible. But we do try to aesthetically fit it in, for instance, with this farm here. We were the first to aggregate meters in the state. And that's a big issue. I shouldn't say an issue, but that's a big hurdle that we have to get with the utility company to aggregate all the meters in town, which I believe are twenty, somewhere around twenty meters. So, meter aggregation is part of this installation. We take care of all that for the town, for the installation. So, we can install a system at a single site and then we can aggregate all the town meters to that one site. So, that's a benefit for municipalities, farmers and nonprofit owners. Those are the three institutions that can do meter aggregation in the state. And we have the most aggregated systems in the state. We're a small business. We're six. We have six people in our company. But we've done a lot in the county, in the state. And actually, the county relied a lot on us initially when renewable energies came pretty popular in the county, relying on us for information. So, we work very closely with the jurisdiction, county, and spectrum. So, when we talk about the solar P V photovoltaic system, to give you a brief overview, I'll try not to bore you too much. Again, I'm an engineer. Usually, my daughter is the one that kind of gives the presentations. And she tends not to get into the numbers. So, in the state of Maryland, we have approximately, at the end of this year, we'll have about two hundred megawatts of power, solar power, in the county. Or, I'm sorry, in the entire state. Just to put that in perspective, the largest coal-fired power plant in Maryland is twenty-four hundred megawatts. So, in the state, we're looking at less than ten percent of solar right now that is going to be in the state in two thousand and fourteen. So, it's, you know, it's a small number, but it's growing. And each year, it's getting a little more as incentives kind of die down. We're looking at this type of installation, power purchase, because the cost becomes just a little too much when you don't have the incentives and the grants and all that stuff going away. Carroll County has approximately five point one megawatts of solar in the county. So, out of the two hundred, we're looking at about five megawatts here in total, Carroll County. So, to kind of put that in perspective, it's about two thousand acres. If you were to take all the panels and put them on the ground, you're looking at about two thousand acres of space. And probably half of that are on rooftops. So, in total, you're looking at about a thousand acres. If it was all on the ground, that's the total space that it's going to take up. Type of system that you're looking at for the, for the town is maybe less than an acre, depending on how the layout of the land is. For the size of systems you're looking at, around four or five hundred. I don't know the specifics yet. I didn't have a chance to really look at all the numbers. Somewhere in the four hundred to five hundred kilowatt range, which is a half a megawatt. So, I know the county commissioners are putting up a big stick about solar all over an ag preserve, but if you, and again, I'm on my soapbox here. You're looking at only a thousand acres of panels if you were to put them on the ground. That's how much space you're taking. So, I know there are issues with, they don't want solar all over a place on farms. But really, it's not a lot of systems that you physically are going to see up there. Of the five point one megawatts, Earth and Air Technologies has installed about one and a half megawatts. So, about thirty percent of all the installations in Carroll County, Earth and Air Technologies has installed. So, we are capable. We have the technology, the engineers, the designs. We do everything on our end. Nothing is subcontracted out, other than we get our stamp design for wind loads and snow loads for our ground mounted practices. We do everything. Nothing subcontracted. Everything's done.
Who's doing the other three point seven?
I'm sorry?
Who's doing the other three point seven? Who's the competition?
Well, actually, there's about one and a half megawatt, well, there's about a megawatt up the door break, up by the airport. There's about a half a megawatt at Boscoff. So, those two alone are about a meg and a half.
But who did them for them?
No, we did not. I don't know.
Oh, you don't know who did them. Okay. Okay.
So, again, small, but we have the capability of doing any size system, small, large utilities. We've installed more solar than any other company in Hampstead. If you want to come down to my house, right down the road, I live in Hampstead, you can come see my system. Or I really would like you to take a tour of the aggregated system that we have up in Westminster. We're bound to Pet. Really nice system. Give you a real good idea of what you're getting here. So, when we talk about the power purchase agreement, I'm sure you probably have talked with previous companies that are looking at this for you. And basically, you guys are doing a power purchase agreement right now. And if you think about it, you have a third party that's supplying your power for you and you are paying them for all the power that they're supplying. So, there's really a power purchase agreement. And that's all we're asking to do is be in this third party to supply you with all the energy that the town, to offset all the power consumption within the town. So, you also have B G E. You really have two bills. What we are looking to do is with the power purchase agreement, with the solar agreement, we're going to merge both of these where we're going to offset one hundred percent of your utilities. At a savings of ten to twenty-five percent. Again, I need to look really hard at the numbers. You've got to look closely at the numbers. But it could be a substantial hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of the contract. So, it's nothing different than what you are doing right now with your present power agreement, other than we need space. You have the space for us to put the system in and it costs the town nothing.
What's your typical term on your agreements?
As far as what?
Length?
We can do as little as seven years.
That's the max?
One year.
Isn't that the norm?
The norm is twenty years. What we have is we have local funding that within, so everything is local funded. And one of the things we're looking at to do, and I need to get more information. We'll get back to you. Hopefully, we can give you guys a proposal where we like to include the town as part of the ownership of this. And there's a couple of things that if you were interested in doing that, we can do that.
Why would we want to be owners?
Again, we could put together and show you the positives and negatives of that, where you would reap more from the monetary side of things down the road.
How so?
You're a part owner. You're going to reap the benefits of the renewable energy credits associated with that and also the power that your, that the town is-
Aren't credits, that's an offset against the tax, right?
No, actually, the renewable energy credits are totally different from your tax credits in this thing. It's a green power credit, basically, which right now is going for about a hundred and fifty dollars of credit, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty dollars of credit. This system will generate six hundred to six hundred and fifty credits a year.
So, if we're the owner, what, we're benefiting the sale, on the sale of that?
Correct. That's a potential, potentially, yes. So, I mean, we really would like to encourage that. We'd like to keep the town, you know, locally part of ownership if it's a viable, once we put together a proposal and take a look at it and see if it makes sense.
What we heard last month and what we considered on our end is not being an owner, just-
That's fine.
Okay. But we'll look at it both ways if that's how you want to look at it.
Well, it's not how I want to look at it. It's an option. If the town wants to look at it. I mean, obviously, the benefit for total ownership, for air funding portion of it, is much greater than if the town were to, so it's, yeah.
It just seems ownership implies risk. When we're a town government, we're not there to take risk.
Yeah, understood. Understood. Yeah, we work with several townships. We actually installed a system, a smaller system for the town of Sykesville. Matt can run back two years ago. And we're dropping off checks a couple of times a year to-
Dawn.
Dawn. Smaller system for a little rail, Sykes Railway. But they, we helped them with the grant, helped them obtain a grant, of course, with the smaller system.
What other-
This size would be really tough to get through.
What other towns you dealt with?
Town of Manchester, Union Bridge and briefly with-
Then what did you do for Manchester?
We did not do anything for Manchester.
Okay.
We worked with them moving towards that end and they decided not to do a power purchase agreement. They, we were going to do it on their irrigation fields and there were some issues with that.
So, did you actually do one with Union Bridge or was it just exploratory?
We're still working with Union Bridge. On the town, we did nothing.
All right, so the only one is Sykesville Train Station and they've got part ownership?
They own it here. So, with this power purchase agreement, you know, again, we're installing this at no cost to the town. Zero. The town is going to benefit from lower cost on their electric, the cost of their electric. And you're looking at a substantial savings, fifteen to twenty-five percent, maybe fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, based on the numbers that I have been looking at with your utilities. So, the town basically is only paying for the energy that the solar system produces, just like you are with this power purchase agreement. You're agreeing to pay per kilowatt hour what the system, what is being delivered. Same way with the solar system. You're only paying for what it's producing. We're guaranteeing you that that system will produce what we say it will. If it doesn't produce, you still will be paid or based on that number, on that kilowatt hour number. So, we're guaranteeing it. The components are warranted for the term of the P P A. All the repairs, replacements, there's no cost, no risk. The town does not have to be bothered at all with the system when it comes to oversight, operation, maintenance, insurance, the whole ball of wax. We will maintain the property around it. We fence it. We monitor it, both for performance and also security. So, we carry the insurance on the system. We assume all the risk. The town benefits at no cost. It's just, we need your land, put it on and your commitment to purchase all the energy being supplied from that system. So, it's basically just a little power plant, parallel with B G E. So, at the end of the P P A, you've got several options. You can renew it. We can renew it or remove it, I'm sorry. And/or you can purchase it. Typically, it's, you can have, it's given to you dollars to basically.
Well, I don't think-
This is a portable system, by the way.
Is that specified in the purchase power agreement as to what we're going to do at the end?
It will be, yes.
Because I would think at twenty years, it's the end of the choose of life, so we don't want anything to do with it.
Yeah. Well, actually, these systems have about twenty-five years. And they still even go after twenty-five years. So, you're still benefiting, at twenty years, it's still generating eighty percent of its original power. So, if it's a thousand kilowatts, it's going to produce eight hundred kilowatts in twenty years guaranteed by those module manufacturers. So, there are benefits from that. You can still reap out a little bit of five years of income at no cost. Of course, you're taking over the upkeep, the maintenance, that, so on and so forth, other than if you get into a contract agreement with us maintaining. Like I had mentioned, this is a portable system. So, if down the road, the railroad comes along and says, "Hey, we want this land over here," we'll give you a million dollars. We can have the system up when you need it. So, very little disturbance to the ground. So, this system is virtually. So, we secure it. We'll have cameras monitoring the system. We do, you know, very little vandalism that we've seen with solar systems, but you have to monitor it for that. Especially being along the railroad track, you're playing with doing it in that area, something to be aware of. So, we will monitor it twenty-four seven with cameras, video, and we take all that responsibility.
You don't fence it in?
We will fence it in, yes.
Okay.
Actually, the county will require us. And we also monitor performance. This is, although the performance matters none to you because you're guaranteed whatever the system will be performing, but we can monitor it anywhere in the world, electronic, internet, through the internet. And like I had mentioned, Be More Than Happy, this is a system we just finished up last year up at Balm and Feed and Pet, their chicken, old chicken farm up there.
Where's that?
Right off of Sullivan Road.
Okay.
And this system is aggregating all the in-town systems or grain dryers and that that are in town. It's really tough to put a large system like this in town, so this is a perfect spot. And then we aggregated all the meters.
All right.
And that's basically all I have. Any questions?
Anything else, guys?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, you said that you, you do all the construction yourself?
Correct.
Okay. None of it's subbed out?
Other than the stamp design for the wind and snow loads for the racking system.
Yeah, who wants to have an architect on?
We do the integration. We do all the permitting, all the interconnection with the utility, tie-in for the power, which we would have to visit the site and obviously, the specific tie-ins are required there.
Okay, and so you've got experience with interconnecting with B G E?
Oh, yes, yeah. Like I said, we've aggregated more meters than any other company in the state.
And actually, I think we got an estimate of six hundred and thirty kilowatt hours last demo we had that was suggested, based on numbers.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah, sounds about right.
What's the estimated time to complete a project of that type?
Utility, the utility is the one we wind up waiting on. Usually, us, we're done in two months, max.
Too much.
The physical, actual work, the tie-in, we usually wait for the utility company to put you-
How long, on average?
Could be up to a month. So, we try to get things rolling.
I thought you were going to tell me six.
No. Because it's a renewable energy and it's less than two megawatts, they have to streamline it. Although, you know, they won't tell you that, but by law, by regulations, we require to streamline a renewable energy project less than two megawatts.
All right.
Do you have a technology that you're married to, a particular panel manufacturer?
Not at all. Not at all. We do a variety. There are some that are, work better in different areas and under different circumstances than others. And we take our design, we design all our systems, we integrate all of our systems.
So, that you kind of customize them then for the needs?
Exactly, yes. We're not married to one system. It really depends on where it's located, what, do we have shading effects? What other environmental issues may we run into, you know, a train running by, dust blowing up, you know, all that has to be taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ken, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We're learning more as we go, so now you got- We're learning more as we go, so now you've got maybe another field trip, one definitely called on.
Definitely.
All right. Other new business? All right, there's only one introduction of an ordinance, 507, which is to amend the code for conditional uses requiring board authorization. Pretty much applies to the building across the street, which is having interest from a church. So we'll take a motion to introduce ordinance 507.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance number 507.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. So I, I've read this over and compared it to the code that we currently have. And we went to great lengths years ago to change our IR district, so that we didn't have the problems the county was having up. I know a lot of you haven't been here around as long as I have. But originally, our code kind of matched the county's as far as industrial restricted. And we saw where the county was allowing commercial businesses to be located in industrial restricted. And that's what happened down in the Sykesville area, in Elbersburg. And we were looking to try to prevent that. So we went through and we made changes to our code to try to prevent anything that was in the commercial or residential. Churches in our code can go in residential as well as in commercial. I'm concerned about making this change. It's going to open up all of our industrial restricted.
Just that one? It's worded in such a manner that it's just that one, and that building's been sitting fallow with rare usage, and that's why we're looking at it?
I, I.
Michelle was.
I respectfully disagree with you because.
You, you take it up with Michelle, because she was given that direction specifically.
Article 1D, why she worded it that way, so it applied only to that building.
I, I don't see any difference between that building across the street and the industrial restricted that we have down here at Black and Decker, which has multiple buildings that, that can be used, just like the one across the street, for anybody that wants to open a church.
All right, if you've got some suggestions as to what language needs to go in there, let us know.
Can you put a specific address in, or is that?
No, that's called spot zoning.
No, you can't do that.
Which is kind of against the law as well. My other concern is that we start sneaking this in, then somebody else is going to want to sneak something else in, and we're going to get away from what our intent was to try to keep our industrial restricted.
I don't think it was sneak. I think you're looking at a specific set of circumstances across the street where that building is in not good shape, and it's in a residential area. The uses have changed over time here, where I don't know that that's, at some point, you have a whole bunch of trucks. I don't see the people on either end of the street being happy with that happening, or the folks on Shiloh. So it's a unique set of circumstances.
Do they plan to use the whole building?
That's my, our understanding, yes.
And it's a purchase?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take up my concerns with Michelle.
So, or, yeah, talk to Michelle, yeah, or talk to Tammy about what it is you think needs to go in there, so we can get back to Michelle. All right, motion seconded. Discussion. All those in favor of the introduction?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Me.
All right, and we'll have you take that up, and it's a public hearing, I guess, next month. Thank you. Public comments? Yes, sir. Hi, Tim. As long as it's above 50 degrees. Yep, thanks. Yeah, that was tough to turn down. That's all good. Other public comments? Yes, sir. Thank you. Did you do it?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Ladies, you're like.
We're here representing Crossroads Community Church.
Okay. And you're under contract, is my understanding, right?
We are, we're an energy builder.
Okay.
Yeah, would that be moving from Westminster?
Adding.
Second location. Is it offices, or will be holding church services?
It will be a church area for church services, as well as offices, for the office building itself. I hope it's available to the public.
All right, any other comments? Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
What's that?
Motion to adjourn.
I don't know. Yep.
Downzone the property. Let me just downzone the property.
Let me know what you find out from Michelle.
Yes. Yeah, just call me, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Downzone the property.
Next zoning, down, downzone it to commercial and.
I don't know, she's, she's talked to us. I'm not sure what exactly she's putting in the store.
But you and Tammy and Michelle have that conversation.
I would enjoy.
You and Michelle have a blast.
You were downzoning it, wouldn't the people who have the property have to buy for that?
Yes.
So there would be a fee involved in it, right?